Okay, Mayor, you can go ahead and start.
Okay, thank you. Before we begin this evening, I would like to say, since we're on Zoom, if you're not speaking, please mute your microphones. And if you choose to speak, just unmute and then we do have a lot of people on the call, but just say something and you should pull up an active view. This evening for everybody at home, it may look a little different than what you're used to, but because of COVID-19 and the increased cases, the mayor and council decided to move into Zoom meetings for the time everybody healthy and safe. So we are coming to you from Zoom from our homes, but you should still be able to watch everything just like normal at at home on Facebook. With that being said, we'll we'll move into the regularly scheduled mayor and council meeting for December 14th, 2020. We do actually have, thanks to Mary Bolin and Jeff Fleetwood, a flag that should fly in the distance for us so we can say the Pledge of Allegiance like we normally do. So please, once you see the flag, we'll begin the Pledge of Allegiance together.
Well, maybe not.
Bear with us. This is our first adventure with Zoom.
Well, apparently I've lost the flag. My apologies.
It's okay. I think we can all just envision a flag and we'll still say the Pledge of Allegiance so we feel like we're in the chambers. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I just realized since we're all muted, you probably only heard me, but. We were all with. I was on the spot. So we'll move into Agenda Item Number One, which is the approval of the work session minutes. And I believe we have a quorum from that meeting from October 21st, 2020. And if anybody would like to make a motion for us to approve those, keep in mind, Councilmember Shanika Nichols, Councilmember Ner and Councilmember Oris were the only members in attendance. So we do need three votes to approve. So I hear a motion to approve by Councilmember Oris and a second by Councilmember Ner. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? And then the council meeting minutes from the work session of October 21st, 2020, pass three to three members in favor with two abstaining Councilmember Purnell and Burrell because they were not in attendance. All right. So then we'll move on to the executive session for November 23rd, 2020. And I'll read the statement of closure for the meeting. The statement of closure was under the written statement for closing a meeting under the Open Meetings Act. It's item number seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice, legal advice on a legal matter. The vote to go into closed session was unanimous with all council members in attendance. If there are no changes to the meeting minutes, I will take a motion to approve.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Burrell.
Second.
And a second by Councilmember Oris. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the executive session minutes from November 23rd, 2020 passed unanimously. Five to nothing. I read the statement of closure for 11:23, 2020. And now we'll move into the regular session minutes for November 23rd, 2020.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Councilmember Ner and I missed the second.
I'll second.
Councilmember Oris, all in favor, say aye.
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 And and the motion passes unanimously or the minutes pass unanimously for the November 23rd, 2020 session. All right. So we'll move into Agenda Item Number Two, which is our audit from PKS for FY 2020. And I believe the folks from PKS are going to take the lead on this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear us?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you for inviting us here this evening. I'm Mike Kleiger, partner with PKS and Company. Also joining me this evening is Leslie Michaelik, who is the manager in charge of the audit engagement. Prior to this evening, we have delivered and reviewed the draft of the financial statements and the reports with the town administrator and the finance director. And our purpose this evening is to present the year-end audit results. And I mentioned some of the key highlights and of course, trying to answer any questions you may have for us this evening. In the event there's further questions after this evening's meeting, Leslie and I are available to answer those following the meeting as well. I'd like to start the presentation with the audit report, which is on the next slide.
I'm gonna get, yeah, well, you already got it. I just wanted to quickly say, if you need the slide to change or go back, please just let me know. Thank you.
Next slide is kind of a summary of the audit report. You can go to that. Okay. In the large bound financial statements, which is the, it's about 55 pages document you receive, the audit report is on pages one through three. And page one covers managers' responsibilities for the preparation and presentation of the financial statements as well as the auditor's responsibilities to gather evidence and perform audit procedures in order to express our opinion. The most important paragraph in that three-page report is really on the second page, which is the opinion paragraph itself. And I'm happy to state that our opinion on the town's financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2020 is what's known as an unmodified opinion. And this means that the financial statements present fairly the financial position of the town in accordance with Gilead accepted accounting principles. And you may have ever, may have done, referred to this as what's known as a clean opinion also. And this is the highest level of assurance that we can give as auditors. The next report in the bound financial statements is actually at the very end of the document, on pages 55 and 56. That's on the next slide, sorry. And that is a report on internal controls and compliance matters. And unlike the audit report that I just mentioned, this is not an opinion on internal controls or compliance matters, but rather a report on any findings or deficiencies that we may have noted based on our audit testing. And once again, I'm happy to report and for this particular report that we did not note any material weaknesses in internal controls and we did not have any compliance matters as a result of our audit testing. So there's a kind of brief summary of the two reports that are in.
If you want to switch to the next slide. So as I'm sure you're aware, the town accounts for its finances using fund accounting. And there's two different types of funds. There's governmental funds and there's enterprise or business-type funds. The business-type funds are those that are financed through fees to the users and are run like a for-profit business. And so those are going to be your utility funds. And the governmental funds are those that are financed mostly through taxes and grants. The major governmental fund, of course, is the general fund. So we're going to start there. The general fund uses what's called the modified accrual basis, which accounts for the inflow and the outflow of resources. The focus in the general fund is on short-term or short-term assets such as cash or assets that are easily converted to cash. So it does not consider the larger items like capital assets and long-term debt. So up on the screen are the revenues, expenses for the general fund for the year ended June 30th, 2020. So for the year, the town had, the town had total revenues of $6,796,000, total expenditures of $5,791,000 for an increase in your general fund balance of $1,6068. So if we compare that to budget, revenues compared to budget, there was a favorable variance. Your revenues were $397,000 over your planned amounts. The largest area there was taxes. But you also had a favorable variance in your expenditures where your expenditures were $650,000 under what you budgeted. So we want to go to the next slide. The general fund, to put it simply, your general fund balance is your assets less your liabilities. And as I said, the general fund only counts for short-term assets and liabilities. So a lot of readers of financial statements focus on the fund balance. And so if the fund balance is low, they feel like the town is in financial difficulty. If it's high, then the town's in good shape. And it's true that a low fund balance or a deficit in your fund balance means that you're probably having some financial difficulties. However, it's not necessarily true that a high fund balance means that you're financially strong. You have to dig down a little bit deeper. So the fund balance is broken into five different components. And the five components basically show you how spendable those fund balances. Now, you can stay there. Yeah. So these are the five categories of fund balance. Mayor, if you can go back to the prior slide. Yeah, that one there. So I'm just going to briefly explain what the five categories are since there are some new members on the council. So the first category is non-spendable. So these are amounts that can't be spent either because they're not in spendable form. The most common of that would be like inventory. Or in your case, non-spendable includes amounts due from other funds that aren't available for the current year expenditures. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later. You also have restricted fund balance. So these, these, this fund balance has external restrictions on its use, either from another government, the state or the county puts restrictions on how you can spend it. Or it could be an internal restriction such as a town ordinance that restricts how you can spend those funds. Committed fund balances are those that are set aside or earmarked for certain purposes, usually through some formal action of the council. So a resolution. So if you pass a resolution to earmark funds for certain, these would be reported as committed fund balances. Then we have assigned. Assigned is less formal than restricted or committed. So in the case the mayor and council make a decision to designate some funds or set them aside, but they do it informally, not through a resolution or an ordinance, those would be considered assigned. And then unassigned, of course, is everything that's left over. So now if we move to the next slide. So after saying all that, this is what the general fund balance looks like for the, well, for the general fund. So the fund balance at the end of the year was $6,168,000. The non-spendable portion of that is $3,375,000. And that includes the amounts that are due from the sewer fund mostly and a little bit from the stormwater fund that are not available to pay the current year expenditures. Now, after June 30th, the mayor and council passed, approved a transfer that's going to cut that number in half, which is going to reduce it to approximately 1.7 million. The restricted fund balance is $994,000. And that consists of impact fees, accumulated impact fees that you haven't spent as of June 30. And also the slot revenues that have some legal restrictions on how you can spend it. The committed or the assigned funds of $791,000 is the money that you've set aside for the insurance and also some money that was set aside for the community center from a sale of property in the prior year. So that leaves your unassigned fund balance is just over $1 million. So if we add together your unrestricted fund balances, which would be the assigned plus the unassigned, that's a fund balance of $1,799,000 and represents about three and three-quarter months of operating expenses. So that three and a quarter months is your cushion or your buffer for future unanticipated needs. If we want to move to the next slide, this shows your general fund balance over a period of six years. And you'll see it was at its highest level in 2016 of about eight and a half million. There were pretty large decreases in 17 and 16 due to the use of prior year surplus funds, mostly to build the police station. And then it's risen to its current level of 6.1 million. And I know last year we recommended and we repeated it this year that the town develop a fund balance policy. And I know that some work has been done on it. But the policy would set the level at which the unrestricted balance should be maintained for budgetary purposes. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends no less than 60 days, which in Berlin's case would be about $950,000. However, most towns need a cushion or a buffer higher than 60 days, depending on their individual circumstances.
That's really a minimum.
Yes. So like in the town of Berlin, you know, we may be subject to some nor'easters or flooding. So you may want to build into your fund balance a cushion, you know, for the future, the effect of any future storms or so. So that 60 days is probably less than ideal for you. So a policy would set us, set an amount that you would be comfortable with as your minimum buffer.
Leslie, I'm not sure what you can see on your end, but I believe that Jack Oris has a question.
Okay.
Yeah, I do. Thank you so much. If you could go back to the previous slide real quick, please. So on this slide, the unrestricted assigned represents 3.75 months. But in the packet, and it says the unrestricted is total of committed assigned and inside, unassigned is representing 5.75 months. Is that due to the 32,000 variance in slot revenue?
No, actually, I've since so I've updated it since then. The town currently has no committed funds. We had previously reported the impact fees as committed funds, but they were really more appropriately reported as restricted funds. So when I pulled the impact fees out of that, that reduced it to the 3.75. The 3.75 would be the correct number.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah. So if you want to go to this, if you want to go to the next slide. So these are the general fund revenues by source. Revenues for the year were $6,796,000. Largest source of revenue is property taxes of just over $4 million, which makes up 60% of your general fund revenue. Other significant sources are intergovernmental or grant revenues of $1,086,000 or 16% of your total revenues. And then service charges from the enterprise funds of 820,000 or 12%. If we compare your revenues this year to last year, revenues increased 197,000 or 3%. Largest increase was in property taxes, which increased 676,000. But then you had decreases in the state shared income taxes, licenses and permits and impact fees. The next slide shows you your general fund expenditures by program. Yeah, there we go. So total expenditures are, were $5,791,000. Largest area of expenditures is public safety, which is the police and the fire department, which makes up 39% of your total expenditures. General government or administration, which makes up 26%. And then public works, which is 16% of your total expenditures. Again, if we compare expenditures this year and last year, expenditures decreased 900,000 or 13%. They basically decreased in all categories due to budget cuts and also some of the COVID limitations and canceled events also caused some decreases in expenditures. So that's the general fund. If we want to move on to the, to the enterprise funds. So the enterprise funds are intended to be run like a business. Your fees are intended to be set high enough so that they cover all your expenses. And the enterprise friends use what's called the accrual basis of accounting, which is different, a different basis of accounting than the general fund uses. And it includes both long-term and short-term assets and liabilities. The town has four enterprise funds. So we'll start with the electric fund. The electric fund had an operating loss of $144,000 this year compared to an operating income last year of $349,000. Had some interest expense, also had 1.7, almost 1.8 million of insurance proceeds for replacement of the number two generator for a total increase in net position of $1,510,000. So the next slide, I just wanted to show you a little bit of a trend in the electric fund. You want to switch to the next slide? There we go. So this is just really a three-year trend that shows where, so your revenues in the general, in the electric fund have been decreasing over the period of three years. It's not labeled there very good, but the dark blue is 2018 and kind of the olive green on the right is 2020. So you see the operating revenues and purchase power have been decreasing over the three years. However, total operating expenses have also increased over that same time period. And then over to the far right is your operating income or loss. You can see where the operating income is going down until 2020. You had a small operating loss. The increase in total expenses was really due to increases in salaries and benefits, depreciation expense and overhead costs all went up in 2020. We want to move on to the next slide. We can look at the water fund. The water fund had an operating loss of $127,000 compared to an operating loss of $202,000 in the prior year. There was an increase in service charges of 53,000 or 8% due to an increase in the rates. Your expenses were pretty consistent with the prior year. They decreased about $19,000. And then special connection fees went way down. They were $340,000 in 2019, down to $65,000 in 2020. So the net position in the water fund actually decreased by $60,000 for the year. The next fund shows the sewer fund. So the sewer fund actually had an operating loss of $140,000 compared to an operating loss in the prior year of $930,000. So that's a pretty significant change. Service charges increased $540,000 or 3% due to the increase in, in rates. Expenses decreased about 1% or $275,000. And net position decreased $146,000. So that's a pretty significant improvement in the sewer fund from the prior year due to increasing your rates and really cutting your budget and expenses. But I don't think you can relax. The work is not done. Going forward, you really need to continue to monitor the sewer fund. You need to continue monitoring your rates to make sure that they're set at a high enough level to cover not only your operating expenses, but your capital expenses and your debt service costs. The fiscal year 20 budget pretty much had no capital, capital expenses included in it. And so you can't continue that going forward. At some point, you're going to have to deal with some of the capital expenses. And then we talked earlier about the amount that the sewer fund owes the general fund is going to be cut in half based on a transfer that the mayor and council approved. So you have to be, watch that and be wary that that due-to-do-from doesn't start creeping up. And then in a couple of years, you're in the same position that you were before. So it's important for you to may, may remain diligent in monitoring your budget and your fees and taking whatever the appropriate steps are, you know, to continue the, to the growth or the improvement in the sewer fund. Lastly, I have the stormwater fund. Not really much going on there. The stormwater fund had an operating loss of $74,000. I had some capital grants of $71,000 for a decrease in its net position of $3,430. The next fund shows the net position of the enterprise funds. Now, when we talked about the general fund, we talked about the fund balance. For the business-type funds or the enterprise funds, we consider net position. Where the fund balance only considered short-term assets and liabilities, the fund balance includes the large long-term items, the capital assets and the long-term debt. So at June 30th, the total, all the enterprise funds in total had a net position of $23 million. Now, of that, $24 million is actually your investment in cap, in property, plant and equipment, less any debt that's associated with it. You had a little bit of restricted monies, $3,733. That was the the special connection fees that weren't spent. We've been using the special connection fees to pay debt service costs, which leaves an unrestricted or a deficit in the net position of $1,399,000. And if you look over the bulk of that deficit, it really is in the sewer fund. Sewer fund had a deficit of $3,272,000 and then the stormwater fund had a smaller deficit. If we look at the next slide, we talked about number of days of operating expenses where we're talking about the general fund. In the enterprise fund, you want to look at working capital. And working capital is defined as current assets less current liabilities. Again, that's your buffer for meeting your future obligations. So it's important to maintain it at an accurate, at an adequate level. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends a target of no less than 45 days. So you can see the electric fund and the water fund are in pretty good shape, 225 days, 506 days. However, the sewer fund has a negative working capital, which means that it might not be able to pay its debts because its current liabilities exceeds its current assets. And I think that's all that I have. That's a lot of information to throw at you. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Do we have any questions?
I have a question. I have a question. In regards, if you go back to the last slide we were just looking at and you look at the sewer fund being in the negative as far as days of working capital, when, God forbid, something happens and we have an infrastructure issue that involves this sewer line, this sewer that funds, the funds that are going to be needed to repair whatever happens are going to then come from the unrestricted funds from the general fund, correct? I'm asking you, I'm just, I'm just trying to be clear.
Right. Yeah. So it's going to have to come from somewhere. So you'd have to borrow them.
So my, so I guess the next question I have then is, are you stating or suggesting that we should start considering creating a quote-unquote nest egg or a safety net? Is that what you said? Or did you, that's what you're implying here that we need to do for the sewer fund?
Yes. So it's important to have that buffer, that cushion. So currently now, the sewer fund has a negative net position. So that would be net position. Your, your unrestricted net position or your deficit, your net position is your spendable resources, which for the sewer fund currently is a negative.
Right.
Yes, you'd want.
So when it's, so when it's in need, the funds, I mean, realistically, the funds could, are when it comes to borrowing or needing, are gonna first come from the general fund, right? Which means that one million dollars that we have that are unrestricted, that's what, that's where it would come from?
Well, I think for a major improvement, you could probably look at financing that versus using.
Okay, I was just, yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out as to, you know what I mean, what would be the planned routes as to how, what your thoughts were?
You don't want to use your general fund cushion to kind of support an operating enterprise fund. It should be able to stand alone on its own, but at this point, it can't do that, especially if you have a major improvement or something that needs to be done, it would likely have to be financed.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions from the council?
Okay, well, if I could just say in conclusion, then the the books and records of the town are in good order. So this year, we performed the audit completely remotely. So there was a lot of scanning and emailing and phone calls, which really put an increased workload and additional demands on your staff. So we really appreciate all the extra effort that they put in, in helping us get the audit done in these unusual circumstances. And then in conclusion, I feel like the town is in is in good financial condition.
Leslie and Mike, thank you, but I do have two questions if you don't mind. Going back to slide number six, if you don't mind, Mary. When it talks about the general funds, fund balances, if we go and just the slide previous of this one. You define the different categories for fund balances. And with the fact that unassigned, for the accounting purposes, if a fund like the sewer fund is in deficit in a given year. That money will be pulled to make that fund whole from the unassigned fund balance. And how do we go about if we're going to establish a reserve account? Do we do that in the form of an assigned or committed fund balance? So that that's then under more of a lock and key and requires council action for that, those monies to be moved?
Yeah, you'd have to do at least, so it committed, you could commit it through through a resolution.
Yeah, I guess a less restrictive method would be assignment.
Yeah, assignment, right. So it's it's harder, if you have a committed fund balance, in order to reverse it, you would have to pass another resolution. In order to reverse an assigned fund balance, you just have to make a decision to reverse it. Like you've got money in the assigned for the community center. So at any point in time, you could say, well, we're not going to do the community center, we're going to unassign that. And you don't have to pass a resolution or an ordinance to do that, it's just a decision.
So it sounds to me, based off of this, that the best mechanism may be, once we get down to the verbiage that we would like for a reserve account, that that be done in the form of an assigned fund balance within the general fund.
Yeah, I think so. I think that's a better way to go, at least initially, until you feel more comfortable, I'll say locking those funds up for more permanent restriction, that would make sense.
Thank you. My second question is staying in the same vein of reserve accounts. When we look, you handle audits for several other municipalities. When we look around at the different municipalities, do any of them have reserve accounts set up within their capital fund? So we'll use sewer for an example. Do any of them have a capital reserve for that capital equipment within their funds?
I would say, and Leslie can probably speak this better than me, but I would say generally, most towns struggle with this. They they do some, in general terms, do have enough to kind of cover their current operating expenses, but when it comes to longer term capital projects. There's typically not reserve funds for those, at least I've not seen a town's outward. So you agree with that?
Yeah.
It it is an area that the the town seemed to struggle with, honestly, the the enterprise funds, the towns we've been involved with.
Thank you both.
I do have a question, Zach. On page thirty-six of your audit report, which talks about the various long term debt. The first one on the list on that page refers to the property that was purchased for the spirit spray irrigation project. That debt's four hundred and six thousand financed at like eight point four two-two percent. That seems extremely high, would you recommend that that be refinanced to get a more favorable rate?
Some of these loans, I think they have restrictions on when you can do that, and we'd have to go back and look at the terms of that, I'm not sure how long that loan's been outstanding, but.
That's the only, only one that's sitting at that kind of rate.
Yeah, that that is clearly a higher rate, especially today's.
Well, I don't know, I.
If I can, if I can say something?
Yeah, we can, we can feed all all information for this particular bond, David and I discussed that. Actually, a couple of years ago and then last year again, this specific bond has a very restrictive circumstances of how no prepayment or closure or refinance is allowed.
Yeah, that's my concern is it may be restricted where you can't do that.
That that's correct, we we can't do that. That that's what was negotiated when we purchased the property.
It's unfortunate.
Yes, it is.
My next question is on page thirty-nine under lease agreements. So you, the town has a lease agreement with Brian Brushmuller to lease part of the old Tyson plant. His lease runs through, according to this, June thirtieth, no, when does it run through? Twenty twenty-three. If the town receives the grant to demo that building or wants to sell it or do something with it, is that lease, can that be canceled? Are we obligated to that date?
My my recollection is there is a a either a sixty or ninety day kick out clause that we have.
There is a ninety day kick out, and he, it's language in there as well for him to have first right of refusal to purchase that property.
First righted as at a pre-negotiated rate or at market value?
Market.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Do we have any other questions from the council? All right, Mike, Leslie, I thank you for all the work that you've done and the staff time that's been put into this audit. I know it's been a tricky one, one thing I do want to echo is the need in this upcoming fiscal year. And in the fiscal years and in the near future, making my way around to the various departments. It's become evident that there is a lot of aging infrastructure that we have that needs to be invested in. So that's stuff that you'll be seeing coming up to the council for discussion and and quite possibly in this FY. Thank you both and and everybody that's put their hard work and energy into making this audit favorable.
I mentioned one thing, when you, I mentioned earlier about you have to finance any kind of major improvements, but the other thing to consider, and you'll look into this as you come across projects, is grants. So some of it's funded with loans, but obviously grants are typically available as well, so that's something you'd have to look into at the time of a project.
Thank you, that's a great point.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next, we have a report by Sir Cap and Gene Holloway. And that report has been long awaited by many of us on the on the council, but this is something that was entered into, I think, almost a year ago now. And it's got a lot of work and in-depth research with our various departments, water and sewer predominantly. But a lot of the town staff have chipped in also to bring this report to fruition. One thing I do want to note is that this has been done at no charge to the town of Berlin. And that the opinions in this report are the opinions of Sir Cap with the assistance of our our town departments providing information. And with that being said, we really do appreciate the the work that Gene Holloway and her team have put into this. And the the work that our our town staff have put in. So Gene, if you would like to take away the presentation, you're more than welcome.
First of all, I should should point out that these are not, these figures that I'm going to present will not necessarily match your audit figures that you've just received, so.
It's a little difficult to hear you.
Okay.
We can hear you, but there's a lot of feedback, it's a, it's a very unclear.
Turning it down some.
There we go, okay, let's try that. Is that better? My mic is supposed to be noise cancelling, I do live in the sticks, so my internet connection is not the best. All right, how about if I try this?
How about just computer audio, is that better?
That's fine.
Okay.
Way better.
It won't cancel out any background noise on my end, but if you can hear me better, that'll work.
We can hear you very well, thank you.
Trying to point out that this is, these figures will not necessarily match up to your audited figures that you just received. This is based on twenty twenty audited figures as a test year. And then projections, okay, that I use formulas and percentages for inflation and things like that, that I customarily use in rate studies. First, if we could just go to the next slide, please, Mary. And we'll, I'll be very quick with this one. It's basically a background of the organization that I work for, Southeast Rural Community Assistance Project. As the mayor said, we do provide these services at no cost to the town. And we serve from Delaware down, we've been in business for over fifty years, and we serve from Delaware down to Florida in our particular region. I'll let you read that at your, at your leisure, if you have trouble sleeping. Next slide, please. Just to recap, I did a presentation to the mayor and council in late August of last year. And simply because of my schedule and the project load that I was carrying, and I had people stacked up in the in the wings waiting for rate studies ahead of the town, and when COVID came along, I actually had some time to work on it. But after talking with Natalie and and Jeff, it was, we kind of came to the conclusion that it was not the opportune time to be going up on rates anyway. So we kind of switched over to a an evaluation and financial projections and some recommendations for future actions. So what you're going to see tonight is not an actual race rate study. It is, however, a lot of the data that I would need to produce or to gather in order to do a rate study. So we're halfway there in terms of going any farther with a rate study. But I'm going to talk tonight about financial predictions and some things that really need some some immediate attention. So next slide, please. Again, what I, what I will be covering is is a projection over six years. A base year plus five more years and an overview and some opinions on the the debt costs and its relation to the overall costs and revenues. One thing I did want to add in terms of the audit report is the question came up from one of the council members about reserves and and the standard procedures, if you will, to accumulate reserves, and that is something that we highly recommend. Because if you install a piece of equipment or a system at this point in time, and it wears out twenty years later. The people who are causing it to wear out in that twenty year period are the people who are actually connected to the system at any given point in that twenty years. So some consideration for reserves needs to be built into your rates. And I have percentages that I automatically include when I'm doing a rate study, but that can be adjusted at the town's direction. And we can talk about that as we get farther into the rate study. Another way to accumulate that capital reserve would be to add a flat amount to every bill. For example, Snow Hill, where my mother lives, they add, I believe it's five dollars to every bill. And that goes directly into a restricted or an assigned capital reserve. So that's just a comment based on the previous discussion, but what I will be talking about is is the projection of a deficit over the next six year period, well, the current year plus five years down the road. And also, you have, in my my humble opinion, a serious non-revenue water problem. And the financial impacts of that, I think sometimes when you hear about non-revenue water, about water loss, it seems like just numbers. But I'm trying to translate that into dollars to give you an idea of just the the impact of that. Next slide, please. So in, those of you who were not on the council or were not present when I was there in August of last year. I, there's always three things in any preliminary rate analysis that I recommend be done before you even think about the rates. One is to get a handle on collections, and at the time, Berlin had an excellent collection rate. It was above what I usually recommend, which is ninety-five percent. I realize that COVID has had an impact on that, but it's had an impact on everything. So I'm not concerned about that in this instance. The other thing that I recommend, the second thing that I recommend is reducing or eliminating altogether any gallons that are included in the minimum bill. And I'll get into that, and I always start a rate study at zero, and then I can change gallon allowances at the direction of the the community. The third thing, and in this is the big thing for Berlin, in my opinion, is get a handle on non-revenue water. And non-revenue water is simply, you have so much that you produce and it costs you to produce. You bill normally less than what that gallon amount is, that's to be expected because there's water in the lines, et cetera. But that percentage by A W W A's recommendation should be no more than ten percent of a non-revenue water. That can be real losses, actual gallons out on the ground. It can be apparent losses that have to do with record keeping, lack of synchronization between software and meter reading, what have you. There's a lot of, a lot of different factors for that. But it becomes multiplied when you think that your sewer is based on, your sewer revenue is based on metered water usage. So if you're losing water, you're losing sewer revenue as well as water revenue. And I made this point back in August, your meters, for the most part, are old and should be replaced because they are under registering and there is dollars going down the drain. If I could have the next slide, I have an example of what this means in dollars, and then I'll get into your actual figures. Again, the A W W A standard is no more than ten percent of your water should be non-revenue. In a very small system, I'm happy if I can get them down to fifteen percent. It's going to be a certain percentage in the lines because the water line is charged all the time, it's not like a sewer line where it's only got something in it when there's a flow. But in this particular example, this little system produces ten million gallons a month, yours is much higher than that. Their non-revenue water is ten percent, exactly where they're recommended to be. But that means they are losing at ten percent per month, they're losing twelve million gallons of water a year. Now, I calculate the average cost of water, and I differentiate between that and lost revenue, what you actually charge for water. Your first thousand gallons of water cost more to produce than your last thousand gallons. But somewhere in the middle is the average cost per thousand gallons. So in this hypothetical instance, the average water cost is four fifty a thousand gallons, they're losing fifty-four thousand dollars. And that's a well-run system with ten percent lost water. As far as revenue, let's say they're charging five dollars a thousand gallons, then they're losing sixty thousand dollars in revenue. Now, that's not, both of them together, I'm talking about costs that are not recovered and lost revenue. And when you, when you consider that the sewer is based on metered water usage at these hypothetical rates, they're losing ninety-six thousand dollars in in cost that it's costing them to treat the wastewater, and they're not getting paid for it. So the numbers that you've heard about, you know, a three percent under registration on the meter or whatever. You really need to think about the dollars that are being lost. And I'll get to Berlin's actual figures in the next slide, please. Remember that ten percent, Berlin's annual loss, and this was only eleven months worth. Remember that 10%, Berlin's annual loss, and this was only 11 months worth of figures. It didn't have the 12-month figure yet. Your actual loss is 25% of your production. So one quarter of every gallon you produce is going down the drawer. You're not getting paid for, basically. And that was the, the highest month. It was a 41% gap between what was produced and what was billed. The lowest was 13%. So if you think about that 10% as being a recommendation or a standard that systems are encouraged to follow, 25%, that can be staggering pretty quickly. You translate that into gallons, 37 million gallons of water that you're not getting paid for, that you're producing. And that means billable units, 37,142 billable units at $4.24,000 gallons. That's $157,000 lost in a year's time, and that's 11 months, folks. That's not even 12 months. If you translate that over to the sewer, that's $252,000 at your present rate. That is the revenue that you're not collecting. Now, that may not be translated into gallon for gallon, dollar for dollar, that's actually lost. Because there's a lot of reasons you can, a lot of ways you can narrow the gap between production and what you're getting billed for. But even if it's only half that, you're losing a lot of money by this lost water. Next slide, please. So there's a lot of ways that this million, 37 million gallons, I, I won't, I hesitate to say lost because some of it may be record keeping and things like that. But the number one culprit, when there's a gap that wide, is the age of your meters and that the meters are under registering. Also, as I understand it, the meters are not set up to trip until they, the register, and it doesn't trip until it gets to the next thousand gallons. So for instance, if you have someone who uses 2,900 gallons in a month's time, they're only paying for 2,000. So if you multiply that 900 gallons by all of your customers by 12 months, it doesn't take long for that, that kind of loss to add up. That's staggering, and I didn't even try to calculate all of that. Now, you figure probably five, maybe as much as eight to 10%, but probably, let's say, 5% being conservative of the water that you produce is in the pipe at any given time. So that's not lost, unless you have a leak, of course. But that still means you're losing 20% of your water. You're not getting paid for 20% of the water you're producing. Other sources might be leaks, but it's hard to tell that. If your meters are not registering correctly, you don't know how much actually is being lost. You can also take hydrant flushing, you've refilled your storage tanks a couple of times. You might have had a line break, you backwash filters, there's fire flows. There's also authorized use that you're not charging for, your own use, the town hall, the public works building, the electric plant, what have you. And then last, but not least, is unauthorized use, which is just plain theft of service. But without accurate meters, it's hard to judge what that is. So I, I can't overemphasize this enough. The next slide, we'll talk about the financial picture. And again, please recognize that these are not going to match your audit projections exactly. Your water financial picture is in pretty good shape in terms of the cost projection and the, the ratio of cost, I guess is what I want to say. 54% of your, your costs are going strictly to operations, which is as it should be. That small wedge of 8%, that's a reserve that I have inserted based on percentages that I use. And I should also point out, you'll see that the column number two on your slide is blank. That's because of the spreadsheet that I used to come up with this chart. That's where I put in the inflation factor, so that's not reflected on this dollar chart. But that's the only way I could make it come out right. So this is really a base year, 2020, and five years projected ahead of time. You, the water system has no debt, as you probably know, but yet it's projected to have a deficit over the next six years. And if you go, if you think about the, the amounts on the previous slide, that $152,000 could cover almost four years of this deficit, just without even changing the rates. Now, I recognize that that's not strictly speaking possible because that would require some capital expense to get there. But I'm just trying to make a point that it's compounding this loss and this deficit. Next slide, please. Oh, too far. There we go. The sewer, the sewer utility, on the other hand, is extremely heavy with debt. And for some reason, and I can't figure this out for the life of me, I've run the numbers and checked my formulas multiple times, the sewer deficit looks like it's going to lessen over the course of the five-year period. It's at its highest right now. But the thing that struck me is that one-third of your costs go to debt service and reserves. Now, if you think about the old adage, you shouldn't spend more than 25% of your income on housing, if that's even possible in this day and age. But, you know, you don't want to spend more than a quarter of what you're taking in strictly to pay down debt, if you can help it. Your operations cost 30%, just about 30% of all of your sewer revenue goes to pay debt before you fund any operations. Which I thought was pretty significant as well. Next slide, please. So observations, again, water utility has no current debt, even though the, the deficit, it seems to be increasing over time. That deficit could be reduced by a lot, if not eliminated outright, by replacing the meters with the capital expense to place the meters. I also would suggest, before that's even thought about, a water audit, which we can also help with, to determine the actual gallons lost versus apparent losses on paper. Because it may be less than the gap that's showing right now. Your wastewater utility, as you know, it has, as you know, has a heavy debt burden. And more than one-third of all the costs are going out to pay debt, almost, well, one-third of the costs are debt costs, almost equal to the operations. The debt-to-revenue ratio, which any underwriter's going to look at if you go to borrow money, is very unfavorable. It's going to give you a lot of trouble borrowing money. Next slide, please. Conclusions, I have some, some short and long and medium-range conclusions for you and recommendations. Kind of looking in, in the near term, you just page down, Mary, for one, one section at a time. There we go. In the near term, definitely need to go up on rates across the board, a flat percentage, whatever we all deem necessary to, to take care of this deficit in the near term until we can do a full-blown rate study and come up with some, some rates that you can hang your hat on to recover, fully recover all the costs. And then I strongly urge you to come up with a plan and a timetable to replace the water meters and whatever software goes with them to make up for this, this lost water, because it's just compounding the problem. The wastewater debt load, I didn't know that you had one that you could not refinance when I made this recommendation, but I would look at the debt load and see if there's anything that could possibly be retired or be refinanced to save you in the long run. In the midterm, if you could page down again, please. A cost recovery rate study needs to go forth, and I think that's what you all wanted. Some of you may have thought that's what you were getting tonight, but I've got a lot of the data that I would need to go ahead and do that. There is more information that I will need, and if things go well and I don't get thrown a curve by anybody else, you're at the front of the line now. And I could probably get one done by late spring or early summer in time for your budget considerations. But again, you need to do something now in terms of, of making up that deficit. I would suggest that the rate structure be looked at. I will do it exactly as your rates are structured now, but I will also give you some alternatives for a restructuring of the rates. I find that very often, when you go to a zero gallon allowance, sometimes the low-end users, the, the little old ladies and so forth, end up saving money. I can't promise that'll happen, but very often that does happen. And then long range would be another page down, please. Just that, you know, work, have, has a, an operations plan that works towards full cost recovery and sustainability of both the utilities. Because they, they really are not, and, and I'm sure you all realize that, but they're not sustainable at the, at the present, under the present circumstances. Now, again, I can't overemphasize, particularly for those who are watching on Facebook, that this is not saying that the town has wasted $152,000. That's not the case. These are strictly, this is strictly mathematics, not actual dollars or actual gallons. The water audit will help you figure out where the actual gallons are. And a cost recovery rate study will help you figure out where the actual dollars are. Next slide, please. And we can help if you, if you would like for us to help. We can help develop this meter replacement plan with the assistance of the staff and/or we can assist the staff, is a better way to put it. We help them. But we can help you with identifying sources of funding for water meters. The Maryland SRF, I know, has said before that they will not fund water meters all by themselves. We have had two projects in Maryland that we're working with that they are actually doing that. So I, I don't think you can rule that out if that is more favorable than, say, the USDA. The benefit to USDA is it's a 40-year loan, and you, you have less debt service year to year, but you also have a lot longer period where you're paying for something, and it might be have outlived its useful life by the time you get it paid for. So there's a lot of things to consider. We help write applications. We're all trained on RD Apply, which is what you use for USDA. There's a lot of different things that we can help with that kind of plan. The rate study I will be doing, and I will have at least three alternatives for you to consider, maybe more, depending on, on how the numbers come out. And then we can help you with a water audit. We've been trained on the AWWA water audit software. Plus, we have one that my colleague in North Carolina has come up with on his own that we use for water audits. But trying to figure out exactly how much of this is real gallons and how much of it is gallons on paper. And then looking at opportunities for refinancing debt, that, that's another possibility. And then we can also help set up an asset management plan, which initially, when I started all this, that was one of the things that we were, we were going to be doing down the road. But I think there's some more immediate things that, that need to be done, and an asset management plan can be done as new things come online. And with that, I think that's, that's all I have. If, I would be glad to entertain any questions, and just please don't shoot the messenger.
Gene, I had a question. You had said that the meters trip for every 1,000 gallons.
That's my understanding. When you have your minimum, I believe your, your gallon allowance included in your minimum bill is 2,000 gallons.
Do you know if those meters could be readjusted to trip for every 100 gallons, thus giving a more accurate reading?
It doesn't, they don't really, the residential meters don't really work that way. They were, are, a residential meter, especially a positive displacement meter, which is what I believe you have, which, by the way, 70% of them were put in back when I worked there in 1990, 1991 to 1996. That's how old they are.
So you're saying that all the meters we have in town are old and should be replaced, or is there any?
My understanding from Jamie is that 70% of them are 30 years old, or 25 to 30 years old.
That's significant.
Yeah, and the life of a meter is considered 10 to 15 years.
And the average cost of a meter roughly?
Oh, that depends. That depends on whether you need a new meter pit. You know, that's, I, I would hesitate to quote a cost without looking into it a little more, in a little more detail. My guess is under 1,000 per, maybe 500. I don't know. Jamie would probably be a better judge of that than I, but I can, I can get you some costs, most certainly.
About 500 goes off, depending on what involved, involved meter pit or some additional parts.
Yeah, and it could be that you would, you know, maybe the plan is to replace them over a two- or three-year period. That's, you know, my recommendation is to come up with a plan at this point, not that you have to do it tomorrow. And I preach the gloom and doom to make an impression of how significant these losses are. So the sooner you can address it, the better. But you, you need to, to build up a capital reserve, most definitely, and, and address this water loss because it's, it's really going to just keep on snowballing.
Yeah, the, the meters are average of, of over 30 years, up to 30, between 25 and 30 years, 70%. We've been looking at radio reads, which would be able to deter, you could do better accuracy reading and help with water leaks, and that way people wouldn't have to go a whole month knowing that they had a leak in faucet or a toilet. You could set the computer system up that any, any usage for complete 24 hours, the next morning we come in, we could hit the download, and they could say, there's 10 houses that you need to knock on the doors and say, hey, you got a leak, which could help, you know, help with water leaks and everything.
I do know that when I started with the town in 1991, they were in the second year of installing, a second of three years, installing meters for the first time. Because while I was there, they went from a flat rate billing to metered billing. So they're at least that old. What's that, 20, golly day, 28, 29 years?
Gene, tell me, of the 25% not being billed for, how much would you attribute to the meters not tripping at 1,000 gallons?
Excuse me. I, wow, I can't begin to guess, but even if it's only half of what was projected, half of that 25%, that's still a significant loss of money.
So you think it would be that high?
I'm, I, even if it were only half. I mean, you know, you can take those numbers and divide by two or divide by three or whatever to come up with what you want. I know, Jamie, do you have an idea of, Jamie or Natalie, of how much would be lost because of that? That, I don't know what you call it, that wrinkle in the meter register?
I would say.
And is it, is it, is it the register or is it the software and the way the software reads the register?
Actually, I mean, I can attribute a little percent, but the way we bill and the way we reread the meters, the interface between the software to Tyler, where the current billing system is located, since we switched to Tyler, been pretty much an easy process, and I can assure that it's a minimum loss in there. If there is a zero read or a high read, we always, always go back and reread the meter and re-import the data. So it's obviously that we do have paper loss. I'm not going to say it's a zero, but I would say that half of it belongs to the age of the meters and not registering the gallons correctly.
I, I think it has to be, it, it has to be close to half of that anyway, but even that amount is, is pretty significant.
Yes, that's a big number.
And when you, when you, you know, you look at the numbers in gallons and you don't think much of it, but when you translate it to dollars, it's, it's serious.
Thanks, Jean.
So, Gene, I just, I have a, thank you for all that information. I, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but it, it feels like right now the most prudent thing to do to see if we can work with you on this full cost analysis to get some hard, harder facts. Jeff, are you, are you on?
I am.
Okay, um, so I, I don't, I would like to see that study, or at least get together and present to us the process on how to get, how to work with Gene and her, and her folks on getting some concrete data.
If I may, I would suggest a water audit in conjunction with that, and we can do that.
I, I can only speak for me. I would be very curious to, to, to see your findings. I'm I can only speak for me. Uh I would be very curious to 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 see your findings.
I think that I think you bring up a valid point, Councilmember Oris, uh and I would ask, Jean, if you don't mind, uh the recommendations that you've made, if you could tie in uh one anticipated horizon for completing those those projects and uh the cost, if there is any cost to the town uh for moving forward with some of those. Um and provide that to Jeff. I think that would be helpful for the council to be able to make a decision.
Well, but the easy part is there's no charge for our services. We receive federal money to provide these services to rural communities. And that's anything under ten thousand population, so you qualify easily.
Well, that's even better.
Yeah.
I like that word a lot.
In in this particular case, you get more than what you pay for, so we hope anyway. Um but yes, we can, uh the, as I said, a lot of the the work on the rate study, the cost side of the rate study is done. Um I would need some more information about um, you know, the the twelfth month where I only have eleven month of usage figures. I need um usage blocks, how many people are in each usage block and things like that, so that I can accurately project revenues. Right now, it's just been projected as a strict percentage because that was the only figure I had. So in terms of timetable, I can only say spring. I I will not be able to touch it again until after the first of the year, that much I know. And I know we have training events in January and we have another big fly-in event that we call it in in February. Um so probably um it would be at least April, I would think, March or April. And and well, let's say March, if I can get on it and stay on it consecutively, I can get it done. But um my time really works out that way. Because I have multiple, multiple projects going as well as administrative responsibilities.
So would it be okay if uh we gather the information and the different uh steps that we would need to do administratively to help you with that stuff uh and present that at our next meeting, just between the the council for some action and uh discussion? And then let you know, I think our next meeting is uh the second week in January. So if we could let you know at that time, uh is that something that you would be willing to move forward with and still try to have some of that information to us before the uh the budget cycle?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um I I, you know, I can't promise I can have it done by the end of January, but um you know, I I I can try and fit it in with your budget schedule, because half of it's done.
Yeah, possible.
Okay, yeah, I think that's doable. The water audit, I, you know, we'll, we'll have to see who I've got to assign to that, because we're only, we're only a four person office, including myself, so um we'll, I'll have to see who I can get to, but I have a new person who is a civil engineer by training, so I think I'm gonna ask her to do the water audit.
Very nice. Do we have any other?
Uh actually, I had a another thing. Um I don't mean to put Jamie on the spot, but this may already be happening. Um is there a timeline already developed for the existing meters and uh and their replacement dates?
No, we've been looking at going to a radio read system for at least seven years. Uh Natalie and us have been down to uh different towns and but I would like to move sooner than later to do something.
Well, I think um if you, if you can maybe get something on paper, some some plan. Um I guess based on age of meters, that might be a that might be helpful to us.
So to add to Jamie, um the the plan is, first thing is to look into the grants and opportunity to finance the project. Um we have a clear picture what needs to be done, but how to get there is the problem. Because of the reserve non-existent for sewer and water is um basically cannot carry the whole load. Um so that project has been kind of delayed for all this year. So we will be working with Jean closely to see if we possibly can find a niche to receive some sort of a grant, even if it's a small one. I mean, definitely a good one. Um so we can start maybe phase one.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. Thank you all for all of your work on this. I know it's, I know it's it's tedious, so thank you all.
We can sit down with with Jamie and Natalie and Jeff and and try to come up with some kind of a plan and maybe have that plan in place for your January meeting, if that suits them.
I'm sorry, I got booted. Uh technical difficulties. I'm I'm fairly certain you can bring me up to speed quickly. I only missed a minute.
We're 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 talking about developing a plan for a meter meter replacement. However, uh what sticks out is possible funding and uh and Jean has said that she can get with her staff and possibly come up with with some ideals for our next meeting, the meeting in January.
Thank you.
If if that's doable from their point of view, I mean, I think it's doable from ours. I don't want to put them on the spot either.
Will do our best.
Okay.
Just like always.
Thank you. I know that uh it's it's taken uh a little bit of time to discuss, but it's taken so much time for staff and for Jean and everybody to put together. Uh there there's a lot of work that goes into this and a lot of work that goes into the the options that we're considering uh moving forward with. So thank you for that and thank you for uh the awesome rate that you charged us uh to provide this report, so.
Everybody gets the same service.
And thank you for this very useful information.
My pleasure.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you have any any questions, um please, you know, give me a call and and I'll be in touch with um Natalie and Jamie and Jeff tomorrow, probably.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. All right, so we are on to agenda item number four, uh which is the discussion. Uh it's a discussion only item and it's the discussion of deeding a right of way for the expansion project for Maryland three seventy six. Uh we have various representatives from State Highway and just to bring everybody up to speed, this is the intersection of one thirteen and Bay Street. Uh right there in the area of Uncle Willie's and uh the Dollar General and the Police Department. So uh the representatives from State Highway, I think Judd's on and and several of his colleagues, so go ahead.
Uh thank you, Mayor. Uh good evening. Uh can you all hear me okay?
There was a little bit of backfeed, but towards the end, we could hear you pretty well.
Okay, uh sorry about that. Uh my name's Judd Vickers. I'm with uh Maryland State Highway. And I'm a real property supervisor with uh District One.
Mr. Vickers, there's a significant echo.
Yes.
Bear with me one moment.
I do see that you appear twice. I'm not sure if you've also called in, but maybe if you have, you're getting feedback from that.
Yeah, you need to turn something off.
Oh, I ain't good. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, sorry about that. Technical difficulties.
Thank you.
All right, apologize for that. Um I'm here this evening with my colleagues, uh real property manager Doug Summers, as well as assistant district engineer Dallas Baker to answer questions and make this presentation to you. Our request to you this evening is for a real property transfer from the town of Berlin to State Highway, which would allow us to proceed with improvements to Maryland three seventy six, beginning at the intersection with US thirteen and ending at Flower Street. Um at this time, I'm going to share Platt, uh SHA Platt six one six oh four with you. Um and I believe you also have paper copies which have been highlighted as well, so bear with me one moment while I share that screen.
And Judd, just just for clarification, this is a discussion item this evening. Uh what takes place is that we have to, one, the similar for the council, uh what we just did with the Willow's project. Uh there's discussion, then we'll determine the path forward from the council. Then there's an advertising period if we choose to move forward with the deeding of the right of way. And then there would be action by the council, so just.
Absolutely, and I appreciate your uh time in considering this this evening. And Mary has kindly brought up the plat. She did a much uh superior job to my highlighting, so I appreciate that. Thank you, Mary. Um so the first item I'd like to go over with you is actually shown in yellow. It's highlighted. And I have to apologize, uh I have a kitty cat who likes to share the screen sometimes as well. Think we all have that uh issue in the in the days of Zoom. Uh the highlighted area in yellow is uh what we're asking uh for transfer and fee simple from the town of Berlin to State Highway. This area would be used uh for road improvements. This area consists of approximately six hundred and thirty square feet. And uh you can see that area down uh right along the corner um of three seventy six in Decatur Street. Uh just to the the east or the right of that, you'll see an area highlighted in orange as well as an area highlighted in orange on the north side of three seventy six. Those areas are what we call perpetual easement areas. And in those uh types of areas, the town would retain ownership of the property but would give a state highway a perpetual easement to make drainage improvements as well as run utilities along those corridors. And the last item is actually shown in green. It's on the south side of three seventy six. And that is a temporary easement um only. And that would be used by State Highway during the construction period for equipment staging and grading. Um and just to uh review again, the um the square footage of the easement areas on the north side of three seventy six is four thousand thirty one square feet. The south side of three seventy six is four hundred and ninety six square feet. And then the temporary easement in green is uh one thousand one hundred and thirty six square feet. And uh that that really uh encompasses our uh real estate request from you. And uh we appreciate your consideration tonight and we're available for any questions you might have.
Now, if if I may, real quick, jump in, please. When we look at the fee simple on the south side um across from Flower Street, that is in the proposed movement by the town and council in the earlier days of readjusting Decatur Street so that we can make a controlled intersection uh together instead of having this separation. It helps on the movement of traffic that uh and and this was from my understanding per the council and mayors beforehand to shift Decatur Street over across from Flower Street for safety reasons. So that fee simple was really going to be the apron and a call-saving effect to the town of Berlin in the future, that this road gets readjusted to that portion. Because as you all know, eh there's a lot of traffic that comes eh comes along this area, especially during the summertime and even more growing uh when you have the development to the south on Decatur. And and a lot of people utilize this to cut across to said, say, head to the restaurants on six eleven or uh the bars or Frontier Town when it's open or uh eh 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 get a, get a good crossover heading north. What we're doing is is getting you all prepared for development in the future that was requested. Um that that perpetual easement, this is something that we've been trying to do uh a lot more often with a lot of companies. Uh especially utility companies of expanding and setting a corridor so that we can put utilities accordingly within this area. And in fact, a big one that we're doing right now that we're dealing with the feds and moving forth is something from the governor that we're moving gas lines uh within SHA right away from Wycomico County all the way down to UMS, University of Maryland Nation Shore and as well as ECI with these perpetual easements. Now, on the north side, that perpetual easement that's being illustrated, that is for drainage. We're putting a large drainage structure in there upon y'all's property. With that in mind, it's also helping you in the future that whatever you all decide to do, whether you build or expand on your own or decide to sell it, we have a lot of that stuff in place. And and when I say this, it's not often that I get the chance to say this, but we're being proactive to the community of Berlin that with new sidewalks, with these new improvements, with new utilities, we're working with utility companies, not to mention Berlin uh Electric, that we want to try to get these steps in place to improve what we can right now and give great opportunities for expansion and development and not to mention safety for all people that travel within this road.
Tell me, Doug, uh i- in your rendition, uh you stated that this would get us ready for development as requested. Can you elaborate on that, please?
Yes, from my understanding, and I don't have all the details on this, this project has been in development for a while and hopefully Mr. Baker that's online right now can elaborate further. But on the south side of the uh Cater Street, it was the intentions uh between both parties and and we've had a great great many years of working together um to shift Decatur Street further to the east and put it across from Flower Street.
Yes.
This increases safety. This increases safety of queuing with the amount of traffic i- i- and and i- in some regards outside of uh uh really say summertime traffic, you know, for those visiting Assateague and and all the campgrounds and developments around the area. This helps on the the safety side of things uh by shifting Decatur Street in the future based off the development and what the town permits and the county permits. Um i- in that same hands, we're looking at these type of adjustments. Because eh like even with you guys or or with the town or any town or county, you know, you have many issues that you have to address, but the other side of it is is dealing with traffic. And by that mode, that helps issues in the long run. Now, on the other side of it is, it's drainage. There's a heavy major branch that is just to the east of the perpetual easement on the north side. Um with that in mind, we're hoping with the flow of water, uh given the amount of precipitation that we've had in our time, um even when you take a couple years back that we had almost one thirteen severed. Um also, uh Route twelve was severed, Nanicoque Road was severed by the amount of rain that we have. And I mean, Snow Hill pretty much almost came in Ireland. We have been dealing with drainage issues and we think by the construction and by the design that this will help in the long run, but it gives us time to look at the longer terms if need be.
So I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a, it's it's similar to Mr. Burrell's when I asked, I see which, I hear what you're saying in regards to the shift. And I know you got, you say you guys have been discussing this for a while, and I'm assuming this was before the police department and the Dollar General came into play when you started this conversation. Am I right in that?
I do not.
The shift, I don't know.
For sure. Uh that one, I do not have that information and I sincerely apologize on that one.
Oh, no, that's okay. That's okay. I mean, because when I'm looking at this, and I say this more so for our constituents who are listening and who will hear this. When you think about this shift of Decatur Street over so that it's peril or so that it's it's lining up with Flower Street. And then the idea of um those structures being there currently, I guess, trying to visualize this currently is 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 difficult, you know what I mean? And I know we haven't gotten there yet, so I guess because we're in the discussion phases, those are thing, that's that's something that I that I question, you know, how that's, how that would come into play. I know we're not there yet, but that is a thought, that's a question.
Well, and and here's a great example. And take downtown Berlin on eight eighteen with three seventy six. Look how many major arteries tie in, but they're not tied in together to when you have to pull out and look at the buildings for your sight distance.
For sure.
Anyone who's moving. And and this again is where we're trying to be proactive to keep this kind of situation. Even though downtown is unique and beautiful and it's on rate, I mean, yeah, I I, you know, I live, I used to. I mean, yeah, I, I, you know, I lived, I used to live on Franklin Avenue for two years there in Berlin and. But these type of queues, we don't want to see more of because it does put more of a major risk to. The travelers and also depending on the type of traffic that comes. When, when you all have the great festivities and, and all the beautiful shops, the eateries. Everything in downtown, when you have a lot of these intersections misqued. It does add to dangers, even though the traffic, uh, traffic speed is low. It does add some danger. And when you're coming up to a major intersection like what is one thirteen with the amount of people of local. Out of staters, in staters, and not to mention utilizing this road to travel to Assateague. And, and, and all the great stuff that is over at six eleven or for us locals, we like to use it as a shortcut to get around fifty. It's backed up. You know, we're seeing more and more that could become issues and problems. And, and again, we wanted to make sure that things are safe for everyone.
Well, hey Doug, this Jeff, let's, let's.
Yes, sir.
Well, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna, you know, get back on this. The mayor and council need to evaluate it and have a clearer understanding with the. I want to just address real quick Shanika's comment.
Yes.
What I recollect, and this goes back a number of years, when, when, when the property. Where the police station is currently located, that property, there was actually land beaded back to the town. So this plan to do the alignment of Decatur and Flower has been. Chewed on, if you will, for quite some time. And what I've been assured by the, by the Maryland State Highway Administration. With the, the proposed easements and also the fee samples. We're still in, in the posture where we can still align that road.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, could I add something to the comment?
Yep.
We've been through about four years of meetings with state highway. Myself and the other department directors, Tim Lawrence, Jamie Latcham, Jane Kreider, when she was here. We had a concept plan done by the town engineers. Showing the new alignment of Decatur Street and Flower Street. And just on a conceptual level, representatives of state highway agreed that that would work. And that was going on simultaneously with the development. Of those parcels, the Dollar General and the police department. And both of those were designed with the proper setbacks. To accomplish the alignment of Decatur Street and they would still have the proper front setbacks for their drive and circulation. And then state highway, we had very, a lot of meetings with them and their engineers. Their design that you see here tonight. Still takes into account the work that we might want to do. I, I don't know when we're going to do that, be able to do that on Decatur Street, but the alignment possibility is still there with this design.
If, if you, if you could get all of the new council members, the plan that. All of us have already seen and been dealing with for the last fifteen years, I think that would solve a lot of questions.
Yes, please. Cause just. Go ahead, Mr. Brown, sorry.
The, the alignment of Decatur and Flower. Was, was talked about in conjunction with developing the police department and Fula. And so it's been going on for a while. My concern, my concern is that you talked about a shortcut. You, you talked about fifty being backed up and, and, and with fifty is backed up. The shortcut from fifty to Bay Street. Is Flower Street. Which turns my neighborhood into a major thoroughfare. That's my concern about keeping traffic off of Flower Street as much as possible.
Now, what I said.
We have, we, we have kids. Playing in their yards and things of this nature on Flower Street, which is a residential community.
Yes, a lot of them. I have seven in my house alone. Yes.
Well, with that, when I say a shortcut for us locals that depending upon the traffic on fifty. With that, for us locals, we know we can take three forty six if need be. We know we can take Assateague Road. We also know how to take through Germantown and Harrison Road. And when I say that shortcut, that wasn't in the means to that, most locals know how to get around within the time. And in that same hand, majority of people coming across from the bay or Pennsylvania. What have you. They, they know fifty as the target point when, you know, being a Pocamo. Young man in my days, I knew how to take Harrison Road and bypass and cut through and cut through six eleven. Cut through Golf Course Road, you, you know, get up there, let me bypass what.
Doug.
Be done.
Yeah. Doug. Let's, I mean, we, we've got the picture here, so let, let us get the council members. The, the, the plan on the alignment. And let, let us regroup on this as far as these easements. And, and then we'll, we'll be in contact to move forward on this.
No, that will be fine. And, and in the same hand, for all of y'all, we have options that we can do now. You know, I can't speak for Mr. Baker and if he can chime in based off of this, since he's the project manager. You know, as far as engineering concern, I cannot really step forward in speaking into that. But in the same hand, we're here to work with you as much as possible.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just jump in here real quick. I mean, you know, the basics of this project are just to, to widen that section of three seventy six from one thirteen. Back to Decatur, I'm sorry, to Flower. Simply because there's traffic that, that queues up there waiting to either, while they, people try to wait and turn left. It does not allow enough room for, it quickly clogs up Bay Street so that people taking the right. Don't have that ability, so we're widening this section so that there will be more room. For people to take the left or go straight and still allow traffic to bypass that queue and take the right onto one thirteen. So I mean, it's really the, the widening that we're requesting is to allow that to, to shorten up the distance so we don't have traffic queuing up as far down three seventy six as we currently do.
Is it, is it safe to say with the discussion that I've heard this evening? That the council will be willing to move forward with the advertising process that we need to do. To transfer this right of way to state highway for the project?
I, I, I don't think. I don't think we should move forward until we have had a chance to discuss this and there has been a motion and a vote to, to, to proceed.
When I say move forward, I'm saying move forward with the advertising process. There will of course be the same way when we did with Willow's. The discussion time and the formal motion and a vote by the, by the body before that property would be transferred. I'm just asking for us to be able to hit the, the timelines that are in place. If it's safe to say that the council would entertain a transfer of that so we could move forward with the advertising that we would have to do.
The, the advertising doesn't commit us to anything.
Correct.
I'm, I'm in favor of, of that. I would like to see the existing plan from prior administrations. Regarding Decatur.
I agree. I think that'd be a great idea, but I do think we should move forward with this because it can only do an improvement to the area.
I agree, we should move forward with the advertising.
So someone go back on motion?
We, we don't need a formal motion for advertising. No, I just wanted to gauge consensus of the council, the same way we did with Willow's. And then we'll move forward with that advertising process. And I think that if we do that, we should be on track for our first meeting in January.
Okay.
All right, so if there aren't any more questions.
As long as the advertising is very clear as to, I mean, I hear you when you say the widening, but I feel. That not only myself, but the community needs to see exactly what you mean. I mean, I hear you say the widening so that you can, so that there's more room to make the left and then the possible right. I want to see what, what, what you're talking about and I see the lines here on the plaques and whatnot. But that's not giving, that's not telling me exactly, so if the advertisement is going to make it more clear, then yes, move forward, please.
And we, and it's not a problem, we can get you a, a more detailed picture showing it. I mean, basically, if you just imagine a third lane there in the middle of Bay Street so that. People that want to turn left or go straight can, and there's more room for people to get around those folks to, to get into a, a, a dedicated right turn lane.
And also remember too, we are, you know, improving utilities in this section, drainage in this section. And sidewalks because of the residential communities that are in and around to get them safe. Passage, you know, crossing within this and also patronizing Dollar General, et cetera. So there's a lot of beautiful features that will help beautify the town of Berlin.
If I could point out something, please. Shanika, you're, you're, you were asking whether the advertisement would inform people as to what's, as to what's going to happen, it really won't. The advertisement is simply that the mayor and council are going to entertain transferring that yellow piece of property to state highway. And it's really not going to say a whole lot more than that.
Well.
But hopefully the plat that we're going to give you guys that we've seen for the last fifteen years. That incorporated Dollar General, the police station and the realignment, it will, it will be crystal clear once you see it, Shanika.
Okay, I mean, I say that, I, I guess my biggest concern, because I think about, I hear what you're saying. And in my mind, what I see is Zach, you were there, because you were the first on the scene, is that accident that happened right in the same spot on election day. So I mean, when that, when you think about the guy that was on the scooter and we already have traffic issues there, yes. But in my mind, the third lane, it just, I don't know, maybe I'm looking at it in a different light. And hopefully the way that you're explaining it is def, will definitely clear it up and make it a lot safer. But when I'm seeing, when I'm hearing what you're saying. It doesn't really sit well with me because my mind is still thinking about how congested and crazy that spot already is. And I know that, I know what you, I know what you're thinking, what your plan is. I just, I guess I just don't see it quite well right now. And maybe like Troy said, seeing the other thing will help clear it up.
From, from what Mr. Becker has described about. Cars being able to stack and trying to alleviate some of that clutter. There. It could be better, but, but.
What we'll do is we'll make sure that.
But aligning Flower Street and Decatur is essential.
And, and just to be clear, this project does not include realigning Decatur to Flower. This is just for the widening of three seventy six. And we do have it split into two separate phases. The first phase, which we're moving forward with is the relocation of the underground utilities. As Doug had mentioned, there's going to be new stormwater pipes underneath three seventy six. And we're realigning the water and sewer mains underneath those. That's the first part of the work. Then we're going to be acquiring the right of way, hopefully. That we need for the second phase, which is the geometric improvements, but we also need this additional right of way. To relocate existing utility poles and such out of where the road is being widened. So again, it's split into two phases. The first phase is the relocation of the underground utilities, which is still proceeding forward and it looks like that'll start taking place hopefully this springtime. And then the second phase would be the actual widening of the road itself. But we're not.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Assuming that this, you know, it goes through, how, how long does the entire project take? In your guesstimation?
If the. If the work starts in the spring, that's probably going to take. Six to eight months or so to complete. And then assuming we get the, then the, if the, the utility can actually, the above ground utilities can be relocated simultaneously. But again, we need the right of way first. So let's say we get done the, the. Underground work in, in, in the fall. Assuming everything goes good with the construction budget, we could start on the, on the rest of that and that work probably take. Nine months or so, so probably next summertime. Our goal is to never, our goal is never will be doing work actively in this area during the summertime. You know, there's a lot of traffic in the summer. We don't want to be working on one thirteen, we don't want to be working on three seventy six in the summertime. So we always try to scale, we try to scale our work such that it's taking place in the, in the off season.
So correct me if I'm wrong, the, the realignment of Decatur Street, that causes, is the town's responsibility, is that correct?
Right.
And there's no money budgeted for that currently?
Correct.
So it's a project that may not happen for a long time.
Correct.
Okay.
Not unless this project. Not unless this, this project that is being proposed by the state would, would impact that area. So tremendously that, 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 that realignment of would have to be considered for safety.
And, and it's not, again, we're just widening the road to add in that third lane. So we can have a dedicated right turn lane, a left turn lane, and then the traffic turning, the other, you know, the, the eastbound lane. There'll be two westbound lanes and one eastbound lane. And then the accommodations, as Doug mentioned, with the, the, the yellow portion being given over to us. Would all, would help us facilitate our design such that. It does not hinder the town's ability to move forward with realigning. Flower and Decatur.
And we'll make sure that there's, to Shanika's, council member Nichols' point and to Dave Gaskell's comment about the lack of. Information that would be available on the project side in the advertising process. We can make sure that more information's available and, and designs that you can see and visualize what's going to take place. When we consider this in January.
Yeah, and we, like, so we, we, it, it won't be hard for us to send you kind of a before and after sketch. Of what it looks like now and what it will look like when it's completed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you all very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
You as well.
Happy holidays to you all as well. It's a pleasure and honor to talk with you.
All right, so agenda item number five. We have Ocean's East, we have Mark Cropper and Blair Rehneer with us. And I think Dave Engelhardt is going to chime in on the staff side of things.
Yes, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. This, what we have before us tonight is a. Request for water and sewer use allocation agreement. Basically, they're requesting to purchase forty eight EDUs for. This is actually for Ocean's East Two LLC. I see the description up here is ninety eight twenty eight Seahawk Road LLC. That was the phase one that is already completed and occupied out on Seahawk Road of the Ocean's East complex. This is phase two, the beginning of phase two. The forty eight EDUs requested here are for the first two buildings of phase two. They are in the process of permitting now, very close to building permits. If you've driven by, you see the construction entrance is already constructed. And they are doing site work, you'll see silk fence out there and they're, they're doing earthwork in preparation. For the permits, which again will be shortly available to them, they're just at the, the end of their review process. So this is as they've done it before, the Rehneer organization has done their EDU and allocation agreements in phases. They bought them as they complete each building. So this is for the first forty eight EDUs for the project.
Dave, I just have a couple of questions. How, how many phases are, are there total? I guess, how many buildings are there total?
How many buildings in Phase Two in this phase? Mr. Rehne, can you answer that? How many we're gonna have?
Sure, we, we, we have, um, let's see, five apartment buildings and, um, a couple townhome buildings for a total of a hundred and fifty-three units.
And, and the first, the first phase, if I'm correct, was a hundred and eighty units plus the clubhouse and the pool?
That's correct.
So I guess just so that I'm clear, a, a phase is considered a building?
No, it's a collection of buildings.
Okay.
Phase generally takes up a certain parcel of land, a certain area of land. So this section, uh, that he's about to embark on constructing is actually a little smaller than the existing collection of buildings. It's like thirty units or, or so less than what's already built and occupied.
Okay, thank you for, for that.
How many buildings were in Phase One?
Seven buildings.
Total.
Seven.
Seven, does that include the, the clubhouse?
No, sir.
Uh, eight with a clubhouse.
Oak it up.
And this is a action item before the mayor and council. We would need a, a formal motion and a second to.
I'll make the motion to approve the forty-eight EDUs, uh, for, as the screen shows here, eight hundred thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Second. Thank you. Uh, I have a motion by Councilmember Purnell. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilmember Burrell. Uh, all in favor say aye.
But before we proceed, can I just ask one question? In the, uh, in the agreement, there's a document that talks about the, uh, future desire to subdivide the property or change the purpose for which it's used for. Why is that clause necessary? If they're, if they're building townhomes, why do we need to have that in there?
Are you talking about the annexation agreement, Mr. Nair?
I'm talking about the agreement to purchase the, uh, forty-eight EDUs, but right above that, it says, the owner in the future may desire, desire to subdivide the property or divide the property, uh, or by other means for the purpose of sale or otherwise change the permitted uses or intensify or increase a permitted use on the property.
Well, it, it would be my opinion that that simply would allow future subdivisions just has taken place with this Phase Two. This property is being subdivided to create the phases as it is being constructed. So I would consider that clause of the agreement as simply acknowledging and facilitating the fact that this, this project is being developed in phases, and there will be future phases to be developed, which may necessitate further subdivisions of the land. Blair, you hear what I just said. Do you agree or disagree?
I, I think that makes sense. Um, I believe the language is the same as it's been for all of the past buildings and, um, you know, when we saw the new agreement for this meeting, it was simply changing, uh, the request to the forty-eight and then updating the owner's name. So I think that's been consistent with what we've done in the past.
Yeah, the fo- the form agreement is the same as it always has been, but as far as my explanation to Councilman Nurr as to the language referencing future subdivisions, did I state it correctly?
Right, when we typically develop the properties, as we do with the, the phases that we're talking about now, we create a separate parcel, uh, for finance, and then it goes through a construction financing phase. And then after it's complete and everybody moves in, then we go to a permanent financing phase and then move to the next phase.
I understand now that you may need to subdivide, but this takes it to the next level by talking about intensifying the uses or changing the zoning or whatever, uh.
Well, but Councilman Nurr, none of that could take place without, uh, council approval. So the annexation agreement in this matter, which not only annexed the property into the town of Berlin, but also rezoned it, specified what this development was going to be like, and, and we have to go before the, the uh, town of Berlin for approval of each subdivided lot as well as site plan approval. So that language in that EDU agreement doesn't serve that, uh, requirement that we cannot change this project unless those changes are approved by the Berlin Planning Commission, and in some instances, it would also require the mayor and council.
And I, I agree with what you just said. So again, my question is, why do you even need that paragraph in there then? Because you can subdivide it without that paragraph, isn't it?
Oh, no, we didn't draft the agreement.
If I may, this is something that is in every EDU agreement. Um, if it's something we want to look at taking out in the future, we can, um, you know, that can be something you guys can discuss, but that is in every, um, EDU agreement. Not just for the Ocean's East project.
If I, uh, Mr. Nair, if I could simplify it a little bit, um, an example would be that, that this total parcel, the acreage, uh, for this parcel is a lot larger than Phase Two needs to build it. So down the road, they may create another parcel. And the EDUs ride with the property. So if you dump all the EDUs on your parcel of a hundred acres, but you didn't need them, you needed them on the other twenty-five acres you had, they would be married to the first parcel. So they are not movable without the mayor and council's permission, transferable by the same owners. But if he had already subdivided the property and sold a piece, there would be no EDUs that would be attached to the second parcel. Do you follow me?
No, I understand all that.
Okay.
Councilmember Nair, has, has your question been answered?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We have a motion on the table by Councilmember Purnell and second by Councilmember Burrell to move forward with the purchase of, uh, or the sale of forty-eight EDUs to Ocean's East Two LLC. All in favor, say aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
I've heard, uh, from.
Aye.
All of, so, uh, the motion passes unanimously with a five to nothing vote. Thank you, uh, Mr. Cropper and Mr. uh, Rehne, and, uh, we will move on to the town administrator's report.
Thank you all.
For your time and consideration.
Have a good holiday, guys.
You too.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I, I have a few things, uh. The first, the first thing that I want, uh, I, I'm seeking a, a, a public motion, if you will. Um, about four, almost five weeks ago, I, uh, the, the vehicle that I operate with the town was, had developed some mechanical issues, some actual transmission. Uh, had multiple, I say multiple, I had three actual, uh, quotes to have that repaired. Um, and the vehicle itself was pushing close to two hundred thousand miles. Um, the, the lowest price that I had on a transmission replacement was twenty-two hundred dollars. Uh, I had sought a email query because to be very blunt with you, I got tired of walking. Um, and long story short, um, uh, what I gathered from the email, uh, query was that the authorization was there to procure a light vehicle not to exceed twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars. Well, the good news is, uh, a, a light vehicle was procured and the actual cost was twenty-three thousand dollars even. So in turn, the vehicle that, um, that I was operating has been, uh, it's all for delivery, if you will, no, no insurance on that now. Um, so what I'm seeking from the mayor and council, um, is a, is a motion to approve the, the procurement of the vehicle.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilmember Burrell. A second?
I second that motion.
And I have a second by Councilmember Nichols. All in favor, say aye.
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 And the motion to purchase a vehicle for the town administrator to replace his, uh, mechanically challenged vehicle has been approved unanimously.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, but I also want to announce some personnel issues. Our personnel, um, I shouldn't call them issues, they are accolades. Um, I'm, I'm tonight publicly announcing that our Public Works Superintendent Dave Wheaton has announced his retirement. That retirement will take place, uh, effective April one. Dave started with the town in two thousand and four. Uh, he's going to be sorely missed, and we will begin the, the sourcing for that role, um, sometime after the, um, a- after the holiday season. Um, I'm also here tonight to announce that, uh, Senior Police Officer Claude Holland has announced his retirement. Claude will, um, uh, be officially retired on January one. Claude has been with the town, uh, since two thousand and six. And I, again, want to give special accolades to, uh, uh, Special Officer or Senior Police Officer Holland. He has been instrumental over the years with the, the National Night Out event. Uh, he's going to be sorely missed as well. I want to reach out and share with everyone here back on December the fifth of, uh, two thousand and twenty. Uh, it was a Saturday, Jamie Latcham called me at some early hour of the morning, and Jamie and his crew were over on uh, Burley Street. We had a, we had an issue with a, um, uh, a wastewater pipe in, in a residence home. The pipe itself had severed. Um, I won't go through the explicit's when they, when Jamie called me, uh, but that has been repaired, uh, for the homeowner. Um, I say repaired, we stopped the leak, and then the actual, uh, fixed improvements were borne by the homeowner. So we did not do the, 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 the final fix, if you will, but we did stop, uh, roll sewage from going into this person's ba- uh, basement. Jamie, I pr- I appreciate it very, very much.
And Jeff, if you don't mind, let's pause, let's pause there just for a moment, uh, just so that everybody's aware. Uh, Jamie had to do some, some sourcing on acquiring a piece of, uh, equipment that we needed to be able to plug that sewer pipe. Uh, so I've asked the town administrator and Jamie to look into pricing. It's basically like an airbag. Jamie, you can elaborate, uh, that plugs that line so that sewage cannot flow through it. Um, and being that he had to source that from rather far away, um, it may be wise to look into what it would take to acquire such equipment.
And I, I want to jump in real quick on that, uh, and, and I'm, I'm calling people by name here. I think we all put a lot of, uh, credibility um, with Jamie, and we also put a lot of credibility with Marvin Smith. And I haven't even shared this with Jamie as of, uh, as of tonight, but Marvin actually approached me and said, you're, you're, you're my boss. He said, I want you to know, he said, um, he really impressed me when he, when he did this, his actions, his care, and his resourcefulness. And that concludes my report. So if we can move into departmental reports, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna play Ivy Wells tonight. Anyway, she wanted me to give you all an update as it relates to the, um, the, the, the winners of the Light Up Berlin Contest, and that's the Christmas, uh, the decorations on homes. So the winners are the Clark Griswold Award for the brightest house in Berlin, goes to one fourteen, uh, Maple Drive. Honorable mention, three, three twenty-six William Street, unit number two oh one, and two oh eight, two zero eight Broad Street. The Kevin McAllister Award for the most creative house in Berlin goes to one oh one Middles, Middle Street. Honorable mentions go to one thirteen Davis Court and one oh two Tingle Road. The George Bailey Award for the most traditionally decorated house in Berlin goes to four, one four South Main Street. Honorable mentions go to one zero eight Cedar and two nine four Powell Circle. The Charles Dickens Award for the most spirited house in Berlin goes to one oh eight Bryant Avenue. Honorable mentions go to seven Burley and six fourteen William Street. A voting for the People's Choice Award will be on social media starting tomorrow. And, um, Ivy states that she wants to thank you to, uh, she wants a big thank you to all who entered, and we hope that th- those families and all families enjoy your magical journey around Berlin. So that concludes Ivy's report. Uh, I'll move on to Mary. Being Mary is on, on this.
Uh, I really don't have anything except to thank everybody for their patience as we've gone through learning this new way of, of, um, hosting or holding mayor and council meetings. I think for the most part, everything went well. Uh, there were a couple of glitches, but nothing major. And I just think we'll continue to improve as we go.
Okay, Jamie?
Um, yeah, we've replaced a fire hydrant on the corner of South Main or North Main and Bryant. And we replaced two valves that were broken there for that fire hydrant also, and, um, we're going to do a water service tap tomorrow on West Street and maybe, uh, I don't want to say it, but maybe, uh, put the salt spreader on just in case we get some inclement weather Wednesday.
And I want to, I want to, uh, 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 piggyback on, um, on, uh, what, uh, a conversation Jamie and I had today. I'm calling Jamie for twenty twenty, the, the valve man, because he's replaced, his department has replaced. How many valves, Jamie?
Um, as of, a- as of last week, we replaced eighteen.
And then I asked the million dollar question, how many valves are there in the town?
I'm, I'm gonna give or take, they're somewhere around four hundred and fifty.
So eighteen valves at four hundred and fifty, you can do the math. But of those eighteen valves, what was the, what was the age on those valves?
Well, they're double my age, and I was born in nineteen seventy-eight. So I'm gonna say they were probably about nineteen forty-five, fifty, somewhere in there, forties.
So we, we've got our money out of them. Um, anything else, Jamie?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Natalie? Natalie?
Yes, um, well, going forward, we're going to be working closely with Jim to get all this information in time. Um, also this week, Wednesday, we have our annual Public Service Commission hearing. Um, and just to give a brief, um, description, every month we submit, um, electric rates for approval to the Public Service Commission, and then once we complete twelve months, uh, we conduct, um, or we present summarized paperwork in front of them, and basically it serves as reconciliation. Then we have a factor, whether we are recovering a little bit or, um, subtracting a little bit um, from the public, from the rate going forward. Um, that work done between, um, Town of Berlin, Booton Associates, and our, um, law office, uh, Jill Barker, um, and I want to mention also Jill Barker is retiring. So we'll be looking to Park Novice, um, different law firm um, in the near future to deal with electric, um, legal or professional services. Um, that's about it. Thank you.
And the, and the shoe tag on what Natalie was sharing about Jill retiring, Natalie and I have had a, uh, an initial, uh, call it meet and greet, uh, phone call. The, what I found fascinating, Jill Barker, I, obviously, I asked her for a referral on who would, who could and who would she recommend to replace her. And I was actually, um, I had to take a step back because she did not, uh, recommend someone from her law firm. She went to an outside law firm, an independent, uh, and this young lady's name is Phyllis Kimmel. Um, we have had an initial conversation with her, uh, I've asked her for her fee schedule. Um, got glowing recommendations from, uh, from Jill, of what the next plan is with Phyllis is to include her on one of her upcoming, uh, meetings so that she can have an opportunity to meet you as well. Okay, Dave Engard.
Now, Jeff, I don't have anything farther to add this evening. Thank you.
Okay, Kelsey?
I'll just be quick. Um, I just want to say thank you to Mary for putting this together. I know she spent a lot of time. There's a lot of little things you don't think about, so. Um, also, uh, I sent out an email about United Way. We're trying to get as many employees as we can to participate in, uh, contributing to that this year. I think this year, more than ever, um, local, um, local agencies really need the help. Um, and the nice thing about United Way is that all the money does stay on the eastern shore. Um, so it's really nice to be able to help out your neighbors and your communities. Um, and then other than that, just kind of working on some urine stuff, so, um, that's all I've got.
And the, and the, I guess the last thing that I, I want to share with the mayor and council, uh, two things. Again, I, I want to echo, uh, Kelsey's comments regarding Mary. Mary was, uh, what do you call it, a nervous Eddie, I guess is the right, uh, choice of words. Uh, but she, she doesn't realize her capabilities, um, but she put a lot of time into this. But she put a lot of time into this, a lot of energy. But it's new. So what I'm asking of each of you council members over the course of the next week or so, shoot Mary or I an email and just give us recommendations on things that you would like to see done differently. And if it can be done, I, I can't answer the question, but if it can be done, I'm sure Mary will give it a, an honest effort on that. And then lastly, I say our friends, our friends over in Sussex County, up in, in Delmore, Delmore Pizza, I think you're all aware that each year Delmore Pizza has fed our, our Christmas parade volunteers. And that didn't happen this year, so there was no donation, if you will. And then in turn, they've either greatly reduced the rate or they've donated the Christmas holiday luncheon that we have. I spoke with the owner a couple of weeks ago and he shared with me, he says, I really want to do this for you. I said, you can't because of COVID. And then he came back at me and said, what if, what if, he said, how many employees do you have? What if I delivered individually packed meals with ham, turkey, you know, things of that nature? I'm awaiting a final word from him, but I, I've asked if that, if he's going to do this, again, he's going to donate it. That we do it on a weekday. That way employees can, can take it home and it's not sitting around for the folks that don't pick it up. And the council's included on this as well, should we do that? And that concludes departmental reports and my report.
Thank you. And make sure you pass along our thanks and gratitude for all the donations that they do in a non-COVID year for us and, and for generous offer. So up next is the mayor's comments. Mine are brief. Just thank you again to Mary and all the departments that worked hard to make sure that this, this Zoom meeting went off, I, I think, without any trouble, knock on something. And the other thing is, is that over the past couple of weeks, we've been trying to coordinate a time to get together with the delegation of District thirty-eight, which is the delegation that represents our area in Annapolis. We have a few big things ahead of us, one of which being the renewable portfolio standards that are impacting our electric utility. So we've asked for them to come and, and have some discussion with us and that's scheduled for six PM on December seventeenth. That will also be via Zoom and live stream to Facebook. So that'll be in the form of a work session, which means that typically work sessions don't have a, a period for public comment. But with this particular work session, we're going to allow the public to submit some questions for the delegation. And if there's time towards the end, we'll, we'll try to group those questions into a common theme and, and pose those to the delegation. So that concludes my comments for this evening and we'll move on to council comments outside of and we'll move with council member Burrell first.
Tonight, I don't have a thing except thank, thank your staff for, for putting this Zoom meeting together. It, it has been, it has been an experience for me. And I can't imagine the work that actually went into this. And I like to say to everyone, have a blessed and safe holiday season from me and my family. That's all I have there.
Thank you. Councilmember Purnell?
I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you all.
Thank you. Councilmember Nichols?
Um, first, I'm sorry, I feel I'm yelling. Thank you, Mary. You've done a great job. Mary and all of those who played a part in making this Zoom happen in record time. Thank you. We appreciate it very much. Town of Berlin, mayor and council, thank you all for all of the assistance that you've helped. Those of us that are new, though, everything you've offered us to help us, you know, become acclimated and get our sea legs. Thank you. We appreciate it truly. I speak for myself. Well, I guess I shouldn't speak for the other two, but I, I will for the moment. Thanks for helping us. We appreciate it. Natalie, personally, thank you for keeping me afloat, helping me stay abreast. At Fleetwood, you've been amazing during my time out, being able to call you on almost a daily basis, sometimes twice a day, getting answers to all of my questions, even though I wasn't able to be present. Thank you ten times over. Everybody have a great holiday. Stay safe and I'll see you soon.
Thank you. Councilmember Ors?
Excuse me. Yeah, I just want to echo the thanks to Mary and the staff for making the Zoom happen. I, I think it went extremely well. Just two brief things, really, in the future, would it be possible after we do something like we did tonight with EDU requests? Can we get kind of like a, a report of where we stand on that in, in our weekly report? Just to have an idea of where we are on the EDUs and whatnot. I, I would, I personally would appreciate it. And finally, just a happy holidays and a safe, healthy and happy new year to everybody. My colleagues on the council, Mr. Mayor and the residents of Berlin. Happy holidays. Thanks.
Thank you. And just to clarify, when you ask for a report on where we stand with EDUs, are you talking relative to the entire capacity of the plant? Or are you asking?
Yeah, I, I would just like, at least the first one to, for me anyway, to kind of know where we are on that relative to the plant, yes.
So actually to speak on that just for a moment, myself and the town administrator, Jamie Latcham, who's in charge of our, our wastewater and water department, as well as Dave Engelhardt, who's in charge of our planning and zoning. And even Dave Yassel's been involved in this is, is just a discussion to prepare a report for the council and also to extend that to the planning commission on where we stand relative to the capacity of the plant and some forward looking things that we need to consider. So I don't think we'll have that ready for the weekly report, but that is something that will be coming out very, very soon. So thank you for asking.
Okay, that, that's, that's great then. Thank you.
You're welcome. And we can put something together as, as far as rough capacity as to how much the forty eight EDUs actually is relative to the capacity of the plant. But for a holistic picture, that'll be coming soon.
Is that?
Yes, sir.
Dependent on the capacity of the dependent on the capacity of the EDUs used, there are certain milestones that you have to accomplish. Could you include those milestones in your report?
Yes, then we'll actually, we're going to take that a step further to consider what each milestone would entail as well. So for some, and Jamie, please correct me if I'm wrong. There's a threshold at eighty percent capacity. You need to begin considering an expansion. Once you hit a ninety percent capacity, you need to have expansion plans underway. So we'll take that a step further and, and try to forecast what that looks like in the form of dollars so that the council has something to evaluate.
Thanks.
That, if I may, Mayor, that, that eighty percent, should we, and we're not at eighty percent yet. We're getting close, but we're not at eighty percent. When that, when we get to that eighty percent or closer than what we are now, from what Darrell Kohler has shared with me, what is required at that point basically is a letter of intent to the D E's telling them that we're about to begin, you know, the next process.
And I think we still have councilmember Nurr for council comments.
I just want to give Mary a huge shout out. Thank you. You did a great job on the Zoom call. It was, it was perfect. I look forward to in the future, now that this vaccine's rolled out, that we can meet once again in person and have some of our residents in the audience. I look forward to that, but this was a great, great effort. So thank you. And also thank you to Jeff and Jamie for meeting me this week and addressing my stormwater concerns. I very much appreciate that. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So did we receive any comments from the public?
The only comment that we received, Mayor, I believe that you were also copied on that, that may have gone to a personal email, was just somebody commenting that they would appreciate, they would appreciate the town going to a Zoom format, which we have done. However, what they were specifically looking forward to was public participation in a Zoom on a regular basis, unless there's a public hearing in which public participation is a requirement. It's really not logistical, practical to have the public actually part of the Zoom meeting. So the public can continue to submit comments the way they, they, they have been for many months now up until the Monday, noon, the Monday of the meeting. But other than that, we won't actually have the public on the actual Zoom format.
Thank you. Did we get any comments or questions from the press?
No.
All right. And councilmember Burrell?
Harry, no comments from the press. I move to a juror.
Do we have a second?
Second.
By councilmember Purnell, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, passage unanimous. Happy holidays and a happy new year.
Yep. Thank you all.
All right, bye-bye.
Good night, all.